Roll call please.
Keith Bell.
Here.
Edward Keller.
Here.
Are you signing?
Here.
Christine Holcomb.
Here.
Harold Bane.
Here.
Mark Porshardt.
Here.
Tom Cozel.
Here.
Robert Muesling.
He'll be here later in life.
Okay. Kathy Schweitzer.
Here. Thank you. Item number four is amendments to agenda.
I would like to move that item number five be modified to show that we will have to approve two sets of minutes. One of the regular meeting of May 22nd and the other of the special meeting on 6/18/19. Or support.
Okay. Further discussion and more amendments? All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Item number six, or excuse me, item number five is approval of minutes. And as what you just said, we have two minutes to approve the regular meeting from 5/22 and the special meeting, which was a joint meeting of 6/18/19, which was for the master plan.
We need two motions to approve seven minutes.
Yes, we do.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented for May 22nd, 2019. A second.
No, we're going to do this one first. Any other discussion? All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Regular meeting of 5/22, 19 minutes are approved. The next one would be the special meeting, which is the 6/18/19.
May I make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of June 18, 2019?
A second.
Any other discussion? Support? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved. Item number six is new business. Under new business, we have two items. The first one is a public hearing in regards to small-scale social clubs. And I will open the public hearing at 7:04 and I will ask Christine Holcomb to read the public hearing rules and comments.
Number one, all comments must be made through the chairperson. Comments directed to the applicant from the audience are prohibited. Number two, individuals wishing to speak have time limits. Three minutes, three minutes for each member of the general public, six minutes for a spokesperson of a larger group, such as a subdivision association, condo association, business group, and similar groups. Three, anyone wishing to speak is asked to sign the sign and sheet provided. However, anyone wishing to speak will be given the opportunity. Four, each individual will be allowed to speak once. It will be the chairperson's decision as to whether rebuttal comments will be allowed. Five, citizens may appoint a spokesperson to represent those who agree on a point of view. And six, public comments on a specific public hearing request should be made during the public hearing for that item.
Thank you. I guess we'll start with planning.
Good evening. So this is a zoning ordinance amendment that was discussed at the last couple of planning commission meetings. All of the language in here is everything that we've talked about. Goes through the memo or the draft language that it should be in all of your packets. And just briefly summarize what the effect of each of these amendments is and a quick description of why we're doing this. So starting on page one and then through page three of this memo, actually through page four, we have added a new category to each residential district, a new permitted use, which is clubs with 30 or fewer members. So that has been added as a by right use to each residential zoning district. That, under this language here, you'll notice it says clubs with 30 or fewer members and then in parentheses, section 20.54. So section 20.54 is a new section that we have added that would add some standards in so that when these cases are reviewed by the planning commission, they have a little bit more discretion to make the applicants provide screening or to prohibit any negative effects of this use from affecting adjacent landowners. So that's what section nine is, or section nine amends 20.38, which is your current standards for parks and recreation facilities, public and private. Now, parks and recreation facilities, public and private, are currently permitted as special land uses in all residential districts. So what we're proposing is to take the smaller clubs that are 30 or fewer members and allow those as a by right with certain conditions. So the 20, section 20.38 of your current zoning ordinance is being amended with a few more standards. This is on page four of your packet. So that language is being added. And then on the last page of your packet here, you will see the new language for section 20.54, which is being added, small-scale social clubs with 30 or fewer members. As you can see, the first requirement there is that they, all of the requirements of section 20.38, which is the private recreation facilities that are currently permitted, all of those standards still apply. And then we've added a provision in there that this use must be on acres or lots of two acres or more. So it does sort of set a standard that anything under two acres, this does not apply to. And then sections three and four there, under 20.54, those are what we had talked about with the planning commission as far as giving you some discretion to regulate the parking, the access, the noise, and all of those, you know, it gives you a little bit of protection against all of those uses. So you do have say over, over that. So, and then you can, as I mentioned, you can require them to provide screening. So that's a brief summary of the language that we've proposed. Are there any questions? Yes?
The acreage, two acres or more, are you specifying commercial or residential?
It would be in the residential districts. Yes, this is, these clubs are, this language is only being added to the residential So if there's no further questions, I will turn it back to the chair.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
No problem.
At this point, if there's anybody in members of the audience who wish to speak regarding this public hearing, which is a small-scale social clubs, if you would just come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
My name is Diane Miller, 7311 B Lane. And I have a lot of concerns about this. From what I understand, from what I've seen and read in minutes and previous meetings, this first came up on April 10th. The next time it was talked about was May 22nd. And the meeting minutes were just now approved, a few minutes ago, for that meeting. Most people back here don't even know anything about this. And now we're having a public hearing without what I consider enough time for the public to know what's going on. Beyond that, we're amending our entire ordinance because one person asked for this, the way I have interpreted what has been said. When we have in our ordinances already the provisions to do special land uses or variances of our ordinance, so why are we setting a precedence that when one person comes in and asks for a special land use, that we're jumping through guns and fast-tracking the approval of changing, amending our ordinances? I don't understand who has enough influence to come in and request something like this and all of a sudden, everybody jumps on the bandwagon and they fast-track it through the system when the public hasn't even had time to even read the minutes from the last meeting. Anyway, I think it's a bad precedence to set that there's going to be other people that are going to come in and say, hey, well, you did it for them when they wanted to do something special, you just changed the ordinance. I think that if somebody wants to do something that's already covered under another part of our amendment, and another thing that confuses me, you're changing, you're amending section 10 of the ordinance, which covers the R4 zoning district? R4 zoning district, our lots are 60 by 120. So why would you amend the ordinance and say that we're allowed to have small-scale social clubs and then turn around and say you need to have two acres? It seems like it's a standard that you have to put into it. And I think it needs to be, I think the public needs to have more time to understand what this is all about.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who would like to speak in regards to this public
I support what you said.
You do?
I don't know if that counts or not.
Kelly Nader, 7203, I'm on. I kind of have the same feelings that she has. Number one, it's public comments on a new business, this public hearing is on a new business item. We don't even know anything about this. Later today, we have a public hearing and it's regarding that Lipinski Island. We know it's Lipinski Island, we know who the players are, we know a lot of things. But as she mentioned, I have the same problem. There's no, the last minutes published on the planning commission or on the web page was April 24th. This is the end of June. And let me see here, small-scale social club. We're not even totally sure what it is. He just mentioned it's for private recreation. Can't read my writings. Oh, it's private recreation defined anywhere, that was my question. I mean, what is this? I mean, a private social club can be a gentleman's club, can be a lot of things, and we are opening up for anybody. It's true. And we're approving it in a residential area. We have, but if you read the Clay Township ordinance on strip clubs and stuff, they're very liberal. You can have nude sex acts, it's not, our small towns should not have this kind of ordinance, in my opinion, but that's off the subject. Let me see. My thing, why was this not just a special land use? Who is this? What is it? Where is it? And also, other municipalities have their public packets available to the public. They should be online or in the front. We don't have any of that. We don't, these meetings are not taped.
I'm going to interrupt you for just a moment. I believe everything's online that we're talking tonight.
No, it's not.
Okay, just a minute. I know we had an issue with the Clay Township website that go down for a little while, but I understand that the issue was resolved. But, excuse me, but, everything we do, whether it's this hearing or any other projects, everything is available for review in the building department, our copies, and we try our best to have everything put on the website so people who can go and access computers can do that. So if there's a problem with something, just let us know and we'll get it corrected. But as far as I know, everything we put on the website, and I know we did have a problem and it did go down for a short time.
Okay.
I did not know that and I appreciate you clarifying that. So the whole packet that you have is online every, before every meeting? Yes. And how long before every meeting? Our packets go, I hope, out by Thursday night. Cindy, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Wednesday.
Wednesday night. Ah, Thursday at the latest, we'll go with Thursday.
Okay, I appreciate that. And the other thing is, is there any way we can get these meetings taped and available?
Mr. Zorn's here, you can ask Mr. Zorn.
Not the planning.
He was privately prepared.
Yeah, this is, do we have to, that's the only way we can see our planning?
I don't want to answer that question.
How do you not know? You don't know that your meetings are not taped every?
No, I can guarantee Mr. Zorn's been here prior to the last year taking our meetings. So you two, I've been very well aware, there's a lot of people who.
So you're telling, every meeting that he's taped is online?
It is on YouTube, I believe. I don't know online.
Mr. Zorn, is every meeting that you've taped on YouTube?
I'm just, I'm only, I've been.
Mr., excuse me.
Because I'm pretty sure they're not.
Miss, listen, just a moment, please. Please direct your questions to the chair, which would be me, so we can continue and do this in a orderly fashion.
What you're saying, you're on.
Just a minute, I'm sorry. I didn't interrupt you just to clarify, because there's a lot of members in the audience here, that not only for this public hearing, but anything we're doing, we're trying to be, I think that everybody uses the word transparent, that we are trying to make sure everything's out there. Do we make mistakes? Yes, I'm sure we maybe do, but we are not trying to do anything other than that. So what I just said is what it is. If you want to continue on, I didn't interrupt you for your three minutes, so.
No, I'm fine. But you're telling me every planning commission is on YouTube?
I don't know if it's on YouTube because I'm not the one who does it, so you can speak with Mr. Zorn after that, if you'd like. Anybody else in the audience who would like to speak in regards to this public hearing? Please come forward. Oh wait, can I just hold on one second? You can see everything, may I ask something to add to?
I wanted to clarify this for anyone who didn't have a chance to research this before. So the current definition of a private recreation facility, which is allowed in all residential districts, is the following. Any recreation facility which is privately owned and operated and open only to bona fide members and guests of such organization. This definition shall include, but not necessarily be limited to, privately owned golf courses, riding stables, shooting ranges, bowling alleys, private clubs, and lodges. So that is currently allowed. So when you then look up clubs in your zoning ordinance, it is defined as an organization of persons for special purposes or for the promulgation of sports, arts, science, literature, politics, agriculture, or similar activities, but not operated for profit and only open to members, not the general public. So that is what you are dealing with today. And again, you would have full review and discretion over if it meets your ordinance standards.
Thank you.
I just have one question. This is ordinance.
Could you please state your name and address, please, first?
My name is Greg Ashman, 7240 Bayview Shores Road. Question I have is, is this ordinance change in relationship to Lipinski Island at all?
No.
Oh, it doesn't? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
I didn't hear his comment.
Is it with Lipinski?
Anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in regards to this public hearing?
My name's Scott Walgrave, 7873 Stark Drive. Just went blank, sorry.
It's okay, take your time.
I'm just curious as to the gentleman that's filming this tonight, why he wasn't invited and why we had to pay for it privately?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
I'm just wondering to the, for you, the gentleman that's here to tape this, why they weren't invited to this, why we ended up having to pay him privately to come?
I don't know why he's here and I don't know who's paying anybody. He's, it's open to the public, people can tape whatever they want.
I just said that question because I know he's been here every other meeting I've been at, except somehow he didn't get invited to this one. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else in the audience in regards to this public hearing?
Joe Vance, 7237, Blueville. I have a question. Just what is a small-scale social club? And what is this social club going to be?
He just read what, and again, these are all available.
So it could be a bingo hall? A strip joint? Huh?
I suppose, that's not going to be, I'm sorry.
So what is it going to be?
We don't know. This is, we haven't had any, we can ask us.
Would it be a good idea to know that?
Yes. Okay, the audience members, please, I'm trying to be respectful and we're trying to conduct a meeting. We really appreciate it if you just would let us conduct a meeting. We're here to gather information, you are entitled to your opinions. We're here to gather information. We've had requests to look at it, that's what we've done. We've had the planners look at it, they reviewed our ordinances, and now we're here at a public hearing trying to gather information, pro or con, doesn't matter. And then hopefully this planning commission will make a decision, doesn't have to be tonight, but with all the information, make an informed decision that's best for the community.
It's not going to be any private club that only executive members can go to and there's no fees, they're going to have pole dancing.
I don't know. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience who would like to?
I would like to make one more comment. It is a not-for-profit, the clubs, so just keep that in mind. And in relation to the meetings being taped, any meeting that is taped by the township is posted on YouTube by the township supervisor. Just want to clarify that. I don't know which ones, but I know that the April 24th, 2019 meeting was recorded by the township. This meeting is being recorded by the township and they are posted for anyone.
No, it's not. No, it's not. I paid for it.
Okay, can I please have the audience not do that? I'm sorry. I know everybody has very strong feelings one way or the other, but it's not going to make this meeting earlier. We have a lot to cover and I see somebody else's hand up, so.
I don't have a question, but you just speak into the microphone.
Oh, sorry. Can you say it better? I'm sorry. Sorry, better? Thank you.
Better.
Thank you. Okay, I'll go back to anybody in the audience on this public hearing. Seeing nobody else raise their hands, I'm going to say the public hearing can be closed at 7:23. How's that? And I, commissioners?
I have a question for planners. So any type of a private social club would have to come before this board for approval,
That is correct.
So somebody couldn't just open a strip club without approval?
Correct.
I have just a small comment. Just to make it clear is that we've already had the ordinances in our current ordinance for clubs, correct? This only enforces the application for any club to come in to take a better look at it and make sure it's going to meet our ordinances and not get sideways with anybody else in the public.
It does, gives us more control.
I was curious, and the minimum lot size, we're saying two acres, which I'm fine with, but should we have a frontage in there, a minimum frontage?
Well, it's an island.
Right, you know, if it's not an island. And I know some places are narrow and wide in the back, so I don't know.
Yeah, the challenge with that is that you have a number of interesting shaped lots and we know that there are a number of these clubs currently operating on private islands. It's very small, out near Harson's Island and those, and it may look just like a house, but those technically do not have any frontage. So that would be.
Yeah, so that would.
Yeah, so if it's only accessed by boat, then it doesn't have any frontage, based on.
And I just, I would add that you, it does say that the applicant shall provide information
regarding the maximum number of guests and members that may be on this site at one time. This number may be capped, an hour of operation may be limited by the planning commission after review of parking, boat access, sensitivity of adjacent land uses, proposed activities on-site, road condition and capacity, other public services and utilities, and similar factors. So you may consider all of those in capping the number of guests and the number of hours of operation. So if somebody comes to you with a not-for-profit gentleman's club, you may turn that down. Yes?
I think also in the ordinance, we stated that if they have a sports activity in response to the minimum frontage, 200 feet from a house and 100 feet from the next lot line. So you almost have to have a square parcel before you can even think of putting a sports arena in there and playing.
Yes.
Sports.
And I just got another question or comment for you. I know you stated that it's a minimum lot size shall be two acres, so those individuals that have 60 foot lots don't.
Have nothing to, no, unless somebody were to combine a number of lots to meet that, in which case you still have discretion about that.
Because people can combine lots.
Why we're amending this ordinance is because we don't have enough control right now. This puts us in total control of what is going on at two acres.
May I have a vote?
No. No. We're not doing that, sorry. We're not going to do, we're not doing that, that part of the clause right now. The planning commission is trying to decide and getting more information, what to do with this particular lot ordinance. We have, obviously, we can postpone, there's a lot of things we can do, but this is up to the planning commission. If you need more time to discuss it or think about it, the information we gathered tonight, we can do that, you can approve it, you can deny it, but that's up to the planning commission at this point.
So I don't think this is asking it tonight as an emergency situation. We have a lot of time to think about it, so I would make a motion to postpone it until the next meeting. And at which time we would provide more information as far as, and get more of an explanation to the public for the clubs as discussed here tonight.
Thank you.
Don't ask me to repeat that.
We're going to wait a minute to write it down, so someone, if you choose, take a second and.
I'll sign the motion.
The motion is to postpone a decision on small social club extensions to the ordinance. Moved by Mark.
Supported by? By Keith. So you get the.
Do we need a date for the postponement of the motion?
It's not like we can continue it now. Our next regularly scheduled meeting, because it's not, we're not continuing the public hearing, it's just.
It's a decision.
It's just a decision. People are definitely still welcome to call and please check the website in regards to anything that's posted there. Will be July 24th will be our next regularly scheduled meeting. Discussion? Do they understand? Roll call, please.
Keith Bell. Edward Keller.
Yes.
Are you signing? Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Harold Bane.
Yes.
Mark Porshardt.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling.
Yes.
It did show up easier, he came in about 10, 15 minutes ago.
Kathy Schweitzer.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, the decision will be postponed.
All right, item number six B. Item number 6B, Under New Business, is rezoning application for 9703 North River Road.
So this is to consider setting a public hearing for rezoning review at 9703 River Road. .16 acres. That's an existing single-family home immediately north of Big River Grill, a vacant restaurant. To the north is zone R1, and to the west and south is C2. As you can see in the table in item 2, the R1 district is generally less intense than the C2 district, given that it's a residential district. And you'll note the asterisk that the lot size, minimum lot size in the R1 district decreases depending on what public utilities you have access to. So the smallest lot size is .17 acres with water and sewer. The intent of the current C2 district is to provide generally for retail goods, and the R1 is a high-density single-family district that permits the construction and occupancy of one-family dwellings, and relatively small lots with public water and sewer. And because of the reduced .16 acres of the current lot, where .17 is the minimum, we're recommending the applicant verify that the existing residences connected to public sewer and water. As far as the master plan, the master plan identifies the site as waterfront residential, which supports the rezoning to residential. The waterfront residential district concept from the master plan has not been implemented in the zoning ordinance. There's not a waterfront residential zoning district. So the requested district is comparable to a higher-density residential. So we recommend approval based on the master plan that the request is a logical extension of R1 to the north, and that the use is compatible with the existing development patterns in the area. So again, this is to consider setting the public hearing for rezoning at a future date.
Okay. Is the applicant by chance here in Ryan Lane?
Yes.
Would you come forward, please? Hi.
Hello.
Is state treatment address that would be helpful?
Brian Lane, it's 22125 Richmond Court on Colom Township. I'm represented for my parents' estate. That's the house we're trying to sell. And it's... There's been a house on there for 60 years on that property. And there is water and sewer.
Okay. That's what it says. Anything else you want to add to it, or...
No. I mean, just hopefully we get it resolved. If you have any questions, go on to that. Thank you.
Any questions? Are you still here?
Well, uh, was that once C? Was it rezoned to?
Yeah. I guess it was rezoned. I don't know when. I want to say going probably 25 or 30 years.
I saw paperwork, but I don't really remember the dates. But it was rezoned.
Yes. But there's been a house on it for 60 years. It's been residential.
Any other question? Thank you. Appreciate it. So planning commission members, any further discussions, suggestions, motions?
Remember when we did the map rezoning? There was no...
Yes.
Errors in the map? Could that have been part of it here, or we don't know?
I don't know.
There's a document in the application that has a March 30, 2016 date as an audit modification to other zoning, and there's a note that it was changed to R2. It goes 1988 to 2002, it was C1. 2003 to 2009, C2. So there's some information here. It doesn't clearly state. It appears sometime prior to 1988. It came C1 commercial.
Do you know if it was ever connected to the other property just to the south of that? Big River Grill?
So at this point, the next step, if we might proceed through this, will be to set a public hearing?
Correct.
I have another question, too. The property directly on the other side of the road is the trailer or the...
Yes, Seaway Trailer Court.
I see that's C2 as well.
Yes.
I'm just trying to figure out why it was ever C2. And is there any going to be... Any going to be any repercussions if we knew to go to R1?
It's adjacent R1 to the north, so it would be contiguous with the residences to the north. And yeah, the master plan, it would be in line with the master plan as well. It looks like the Seaway Trailer Court, the C2 zoning, was just extended to the water. So it may be that this parcel of this lot was a notch in that area with the extended C2 zoning. It just captured that, even though it wasn't technically commercial with those uses to the west of the road.
And there's a home there right now with projects by residents. Is this one of those things? Like remember we had the Baden-Brockers that they had placed up for sale, and we ended up putting it back to residential because they couldn't get a mortgage on it because of it being commercial versus residential? No one was able to buy it? Is that one of the difficulties, do we know?
The applicant could probably speak to that.
Is that one... Is that one of the difficulties?
Yeah. Right now, can't... Someone can't get a mortgage on it. We had sold, and then found out that it was.
Because it's commercial versus residential?
Correct.
Okay. We've dealt with this before.
Okay.
And just the trailer part or the Seaway part, they have a 10-foot easement between the restaurant and the house going to the water. So maybe that's why it was all...
Yep. Okay. Thank you for that information.
Then Chair, would you like to make a motion to set a public hearing with regards to changing 9703 River Road, parcel 14-487-0034-0002 to R1 from C2?
We're going to wait a moment to write the motion out so we can then take the... Let's do it. We haven't quite got there yet. I was going to ask our planners, would it be okay to set it for July 24th? Or do we have...
It's up to you.
Is that not time for all the notice? Should be fine?
Yes.
Okay. So if you want to add anything to your motion?
Add to my motion for our next meeting, July 24, 2019. We are entertaining a motion to set a public hearing to examine the request to rezoning 9703 River Road from C2 to residential hearing to be on 7/24. Motion by...
Keith.
Keith? And seconded by...
All planning commission members, understand the motion?
Keith?
Yes. Yes.
Edward Keller.
Yes.
Righty Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Harold Bane.
Yes.
Mark Borchardt.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling.
Yes.
And Kathy Schmiker.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
All right. Public hearing will be for...
7/24.
Thank you. We'll get on to item number seven, which is unfinished business, which is the continuation of the public hearing for special approval land use for 7317 Dyke Road. We will open the public hearing at 7:38. And Christine, again, is going to go over the rules for this public hearing.
Number one, all comments must be made through the chairperson. Comments directed to the applicant from the audience are prohibited. Individuals wishing to speak have time limits. Three minutes for each member of the general public, six minutes for a spokesperson of a larger group, such as a subdivision association, condo association, business group, and similar groups. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to sign a sign-in sheet provided. However, anyone wishing to speak will be given the opportunity. Each individual will be allowed to speak once. It will be the chairperson's decision as to whether rebuttal comments will be allowed. Citizens may appoint a spokesperson to represent those who agree on a point of view. And public comments on a specific public hearing request should be made during the public hearing for that item.
Thank you, Christine. I ask the audience to bear with us because there's a lot of paperwork we received in regards to this. But I'm going to start with reading the memorandum from Gilfles, Webster, dated June 19, 2019. This memo was intended to serve as an update to the proposed project located at 7317 Dyke Road, commonly called Blue Porshoe Development. The planning commission discussed this project at their regular meeting on April 24, 2019. At that meeting, a public hearing was opened and comments were heard from Gilfles, Webster, and applicants in the public. After all comments were received, the planning commission discussed the project and postponed the public hearing left open, in other words, until their June 26, 2019, meeting, which is tonight, so that additional documents related to the review, agency comments, and traffic concerns, among other items, could be submitted by the applicant. Specifically, the planning commission requested written comments from EGLE, which is LDEQ, Army Corps, MDOT, Building Department, Fire Department, Police Department, a traffic study addressing both boat and vehicular traffic with the scope to be approved by MDOT for the vehicles, Army Corps for the boats, Gilfles and Webster for boat. Also, written documentation from the applicant addressing the nine special land use standards in section 19.05 of the zoning ordinance. These documents were to be submitted, which is in accordance with the standard supplemental procedure, no later than June 5, 2019. In order to be considered for the June 26, 2019, Planning Commission meeting, where the public hearing was to resume, none of the requested documents was submitted by the June 5 deadline. On June 17, 2019, the applicant submitted an updated site plan, traffic assessment, sound study, and a narrative addressing the status of their project to this point. Based on standard township procedures, these documents should be reviewed and considered for discussion at the July 24, 2019, Planning Commission meeting if the applicant has no further information. If additional information to satisfy the request of the planning commission from the April 24, 2019, meeting is forthcoming, the applicant has until July 3, 2019, to submit those documents to be considered for the July 24 meeting. We note that the applicant has not yet fully satisfied the informational and procedural requirements listed by the planning commission and noted above on page 1. Staff will be available to discuss this memo if you have any questions. I'm going to continue on, and I'm just going to do a quick synopsis. Was received into the township offices, I believe, June 25th from our applicants, correct me if I'm wrong, Traffic, I'll call it Consultant, consultant, thank you. Martin is who I have, Parker, I believe. And Gilfles and Webster responded with, basically, the scope of what the study has to include. This is all on the website, so everybody can take a look at that. We'll discuss it further at the ongoing meeting. There is also from MDOT. They had, MDOT themselves, had a meeting that requested attendance from numerous parties. It was held on Monday, June 17th, which I did attend, Matt, along with our planner Matt and a lot of other people. So we had that, and there was more discussion held. There is, and received from the township, is a correspondence from a Dee Miller. So it's a whole pair, whole page of comments regarding this project, which we will address in the next meeting. We also have one from a Gerald and Mary Shiloff. And we also have a correspondence from a Pat and Sherry Baldwin. We also have from attorney Gary Jundernelik. He represents a group of citizens, and he submitted, again, after the deadline, but it was submitted, so that'll be on the website also. And we received from the attorney a number of legal issues that are being reviewed. And they're being reviewed by the township attorney in regards to this letter dated June 25, 2019 from Mr. Jundernelik regarding whole host of information, and I'll call it bottom lands also. In the meantime, on our desk today, we have a quick claim bottom land deed that was submitted to us by, I believe, the applicants. So that should be on the website also. And that's basically a summary of what we have received since the last meeting, all of which we need time to go over. And I also believe, and I'll let Matt take over from here, we have another, our new updated site plan. So if Matt can help us out with what else is going to be said.
Correct. Thank you. So as was just mentioned and discussed, we did receive a formal submittal on June 17th with a new site plan, so that is being reviewed and will be discussed at the July 24, 2019, Planning Commission meeting. I would just like to add that I did receive, after our meeting with MDOT, written comments from MDOT, basically summarizing the meeting and the procedures going forward. To summarize what they said, they are interested in what the traffic study that you requested at the last meeting and the scope that was then discussed by our firm and the applicant's firm, they're interested in seeing that study. So that's going to be their, one of the conditions of their approval, is the traffic study that you've already requested.
Okay.
So that's the only update I have at this time from any of the agencies or any of the conditions that were previously discussed.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any more questions from you at this time?
And it's not the traffic study that we were previously given?
That is correct. What you were given was a traffic assessment, and we're looking for a traffic study.
Can you clarify the difference, Chris?
An assessment is done... The assessment that was submitted was based on historical traffic counts. So they take an average of, like, a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday from, I believe it was, within the last year, and they average those numbers out. And then with the information submitted to that traffic consultant, the applicant gave them information on their project. And basically, numbers were ran on an average basis of a weekday count. A traffic study that we've included in our scope would include updated weekend counts for that particular section of the road so that we know exactly how much traffic is going through there right now.
Current.
Currently, yes. They're going to put county strips out down on the road to get an actual count.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. I would then turn to the applicants. If they have any further comments?
Yes.
And again, if you just need your money, please.
Joe Hanniger, Blue Porshoe. Brian Brody. And Larry Scott here as well.
And Larry Scott, where are you?
Good evening, may I, Chairman, members of board? My name is Larry Scott. I'm from the law firm of O'Reilly-Rancilio. The address is 12900 Paul Rhodes Sterling Heights, Michigan.
Thank you.
One of the things that, you know, with this traffic study and whatnot... Go ahead, Brian. Well, I would like to apologize for not having asked with board, or requested. When we went to MDOT after our meeting, we took into account a lot of the members and a lot of the residents' concerns. And we went to MDOT, and based on the concern, we went to MDOT. They asked us to require a consultant. We had a list of maybe 20 consultants. We chose one of the consultants and asked them. Basically, our consultant discussed with MDOT. There's a disconnect with us, and it's through the consultant. So the consultant spoke with MDOT, addressed the issues, looked at what we were proposing. And it was MDOT's concern that... It was MDOT's concern, as Chair said, it was not required. They asked us to do, present, and provide a traffic impact assessment. So we let our consultants go forward. So we let our consultants go forward with that, as it was, it was the request of MDOT. Now, you know, it was our mistake, and we apologized. We listened to MDOT as the authority on the road, and they asked us to do this consultant assessment. Our consultants did the assessment and provided that to MDOT as asked required. We weren't trying to undermine the board at any mind. We asked what MDOT required, our consultant provided that. And so there's been, after meetings, that they want more information, and we're willing to provide that. And it's, from my understanding, and the engineers know more, the difference between a study and an assessment is using collected data over time versus real data of a study. And we've already agreed that we'll collect that real data. We're happy to collect that real data. We just listened to MDOT as the authority, and we, and we only proceeded as, as they asked us to do. So we hired, we hired-
Wade Trim.
Wade Trim, who was a, obviously a respected consultant. There's only very few consultants that can work on MDOT material. We hired them to do the, do the work that MDOT requested. So we were happy with the work that went forward. I realized the board asked for more, MDOT asked for less, they required less, they provided what they required, our consultants did what was requested by MDOT. They approved, and we'll talk about it later, what they approved, and we're happy to provide more. We are happy to provide more. We're going to do counts, weekend count, there were some concerns on the citizens about weekend counts. Historic data is, I realized, historic data from what we found and what our consultants, I, 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 we're not traffic consultants. We hired them, we find out what they want, you figure it out, the roads aren't busy as busy during the weekdays as they are on the weekends.
No.
Okay, wait. Excuse me, audience members, please, I know-
Do you live here?
Excuse me, I know it's difficult, I know it's a hot subject, but please let the applicant have what they want to say, said, then we will go to members of the audience, that way we can have a medium that makes sense and we can gather information. So would you please continue, but in a succinct fashion, please?
Okay, so one of the things that we did, we listened to the neighbors' concerns in the last meeting, and we had the off-site parking lot, which we really didn't feel was going to be an important part of what we were doing, but because the ordinance is only account for 25% of the capacity by boats, we used an ordinance that allowed for an off-site parking lot. Once we heard what was going on here, we, we cut our capacity, our road car count down from 430 down to 106 cars. So that was something that we agreed to right after the meeting. We lowered our, the off-site parking lot off the plan, so that was scrapped. So now we're only 106 cars. So when we went to MDOT and we talked to MDOT, MDOT said, choose from this list of 20 consultants. We called a bunch of them, Wade Trim guy called me back, we hired him, and we gave them our same materials, which he had 106 cars, we had everything that we turned into you guys, turned into him. He reviewed it, he talked to the high-ups there, they said that this, this doesn't require any kind of study for this, is what they said. They said, you know, an analysis is all you need, we know what the counts are, that's what they said. So we said, okay, well, since we lowered it by dropping from 430 down to 106, and this is what MDOT, the authority, is saying, then, okay, we're thinking that you guys would be satisfied with the engineers, MDOT knows the roads, that's their business. So that's why we went with that. On another note, I did email to Cindy and Matt on the 4th, all of our information, and I have the emails to prove it. It was turned in on the 4th of June, and this is the same way that we've been working, where I sent it to Cindy and Matt through an email, the same way. Now, I paid for the Giffels fee, which was discussed with Cindy, that that, that could be paid the day that we had the MDOT meeting, which, you know, was $500, and I came in, wrote the check. So my materials that Mr. Jenderlag references in his email, where he walks us through his letter stating, referencing the stuff he got on June 5. So I do have the email strings showing everything, I did turn it in. As far as the traffic assessment goes, that's what MDOT said. They're not going to, you know, do something special for me, that's what they, they claim that they know the counts, that's their business. The engineer that we hired is, got, you know, 40, 50 years of experience, you met him, he knows what he's doing in terms of this. So that's where that's at. Now, we did, after meeting and listening to concerns of the neighborhood and whatnot, you know, there were some people calling out, you know, that Harson's Islands traffic's all bad and things like that, you know, they don't want to have those kinds of problems. You know, we don't want to have those kinds of problems. I mean, you know, Harson's Island is a whole nother animal compared to us. I mean, we're 3.75 acres, so we're just under four acres. Harson's Island's 908 acres, so it's considerably larger, it has over 2,000 homes, as many of you know, multiple marinas, bars, restaurants, and so on. So we are nowhere near going to cause a traffic like the ferry backup or whatever, where 2,000 homes are trying to get to their house, okay? They're going to pull in, you know, and if the lots fall, lots fall, you know? That's, that's something that I think Mark mentioned in one of the meetings. So that's another concern. The other thing that we wanted to do was we wanted to make sure that the neighbors, you know, that we watched out for the neighbors, and as I explained before, you know, my wife and I, we're going to be working there, you know, we want to have a nice restaurant that the township can be proud of. It is in the charter of the township to, you know, be a transient type spot for boaters. You know, we want to make sure we, you know, take care of that, we're going to be there if someone's causing problems, a boater, you know, you all know who that might be, you know, we're going to take care of it. If they're going to talk to me, they're going to answer to me, and if there's a problem, you know, then I'm going to have to, you know, give them a warning, and after that, ban them for a year, you know, or whatever it takes to make sure that they don't disrupt, you know, our business. You know, we've been going to, you know, we went to Chicago, we went to Florida, we've been going to the restaurant tour shows, looking for foods, make sure the food's good. We're building a restaurant, you know, it's 4,200 square feet. Bobby Maxx, I think, says 5,200. We're smaller than them in terms of the restaurant size, okay? You know, we're going to be serving food there, you know, we have our capacities, which are set by the ordinances, you know? And today, from the Army Corps, you know, I got my application approved from the highest level, it's done, it's sent to me, I have it, I got it at 4:38 today, I printed it out. I'm going down there tomorrow to see them and pay the fee and sign, and they're ready to sign if they send it to me, it's 24 pages. Part of the thing with the Army Corps, you know, they, they were concerned, Jerry Jenderlag sent a letter, and they were concerned with some of the starb drives, you know, I know Keith and some of the other people over there, which I met with Keith and Bill Rose for two hours, you know, to discuss what we were doing back a few months ago. And we've agreed to cut out traffic docking on that North Shore. We're not going to park on our side of the land there. So that's in the permit, so we're going to keep that open so that everybody can come up and down through there. We're also going to guarantee that we're inside of our 30 feet off our east side, which right now our docks, some of our docks take 40 feet out there, so we're coming inside of that. You know, I mean, we want to make it a nice place, you know, we want it to be a place where, you know, people can enjoy, make memories, we're getting letters and positive letters for it. You know, that, that's what we're doing. The other thing I did was, Brian and I talked about it, I hired a sound engineering firm out of Ann Arbor, reputable firm, to come out and do some analysis, and they provided a study, okay, which was not required nor asked for, but, you know, we wanted to show, you know, what we're doing and what's, what's happening here in terms of the distances and things like that. So, you know, we're trying to, you know, and basically with this report, you know, in the slides, we'll, we can show you what they, what they generated on their computer-approved generated package, you know, they plug in the distances and all that. You know, it shows that if we're playing music at basically 90- I mean, we should flip to some of these slides or move, we could, uh-
Okay, okay.
So do you want to go ahead and flip to the-
Yeah, I mean, I respect the fact that the planners had a chance to review what they needed to review. From our side, from our standpoint, we provided anything on June 4th. It didn't translate, there's a disconnect, and we won't accept that, and we'll move forward. That's, of course, we want to move forward. Moving to this development, since our last meeting, all we really were going to do is give an update of where, what we provided and what we've done since our last meeting. Obviously, we hired a legal consultant, this column here, we requested we hire an MDOT consultant, and that was both from the board and from MDOT ourselves. Can't really deal with MDOT personally, you have to hire a consultant, and they've got a, they've got a really short list of people you can deal with. We chose Wade Trim, who's been very professional. They deal with MDOT directly, you know, so we're more or less an earpiece when it comes to that. We've also hired outside as an acoustic consultant, so we wanted, we wanted to make sure that we weren't interfering with, if the noise was, was doing, that we weren't going to interfere with the neighborhood and apply with the ordinances. So some of the things, this is kind of a list of what we've done since, since our April meeting. So one, we looked at the meeting, we listened, we listened to the board, listened to the consultants, and the off-site lot, it was kind of an idea to get around the boat parking, we limited that. It was causing a lot more grief, and it realized that it needs a lot more effort to get that approved. Talked about, actually, an off-site, another planning board agenda. That's obviously a long ways away from what we need today, so we've limited that. We also eliminated the event area two, we made a, we made a parking area for valet or for parking areas, for additional parking. So it was, that actually shrunk down, so we just eliminated that. We reduced the capacity, some of the board meetings asked for reduced capacities, which means if you're either going to do an event area or the pool, we realized the capacity of parking is kind of the driving of what we can do, we reduced that. Either it's going to be the, a pool or an event, we can't do both with the parking. So provided with a chart that eliminated either one or the other, it's one or the other. So we talked about a, that's where it says a single event, or to meet both. We hired Wade Trim, obviously we discussed that. MDOT, MDOT requested us to do a traffic impact assessment, we, we let them, we moved forward with that, they provided that to MDOT, MDOT approved that. And that's where we stand right now. MDOT has made a request that they're not going to, from the current numbers, they're not going to require further improvements to M29, but they have requested since that we do traffic studies on the weekends. And so they want an evaluation of the weekends and the weekdays, so that needs to be finished yet. We agree that needs to be done yet. So MDOT is going to get those numbers and will provide those to the board. Since then, the DQ permit, we provided that in the last package, they've been approved. Army Corps, as Joe spoke with, we've been working with them. We've talked to them about, there have been a lot of concerns about navigation, especially on the canal, it's a starb drive. We've agreed to have zero parking, boat parking in that canal, we've moved boats back, we're going to allow the entire 65-foot canal for navigation. We've given some concessions about putting up signs, would not allow parking on that side, we reduce parking to a certain degree that would allow a navigation. And we've worked with the higher, they're very concerned about the navigation in that canal, and we've worked with them. Now, I know that there was a, there was a concern about working with, there was a, what was that? Work with these guys, working with, oh, on Giffels? For these Giffels for the scopes, that, and we apologize for not providing that, we left our last meeting and went directly to Army Corps and went directly to MDOT. As the authorities, these guys have no traffic and boats are better than all of us, so we're letting them, letting them go with their jobs. Aside from that, we've talked, of course, the liquor control's been approved, it's pending, obviously, and we've hired a, we went outside and hired a acoustic consultant to make sure what we consider as noise, and our, and their professional opinion that we won't be outside the ordinance on noise. Talking about just the overall map, there's been little change, the outside of this changed, outside of the mask, we just reduced the, just removed the, the-
Vent area two.
Vent area two. And that was, that was in, basically the parking area outside. It, it got reduced when you added that parking, we talked about valet, we talked about some way to transit, move people in and out of that, and that, so that was reduced, and we just decided it was better to remove that. It's going to be a landscaped area at this point. Moving to consulting, moving to parking, and really we're driven by parking, the parking, and we understand that, these formulas was driven, the ordinances and from the consultants, we realized that boats can be driven down, the parking is being driven down. We also agreed that either you're going to have the restaurant open and either a pool or vent area one, not a combination. We, so we've done the number, if you have, both are reduced, if you only have, you know, particularly have one event area, it's one big wedding, the other area is to be closed, we agree to that, can't do it outside that area, so if we had an event that required that mass amount of people, we would close, we'd close the restaurant and the pool area to make that, make that work. And of course, off-season, the restaurant only requires 67 spots for the, for, so it's really in-season, it's not really effective outside.
Which this year's a shortened season.
You know, we talked to MDOT, they provide, our, our professionals hired an impact guide, did an impact analysis, they made a note that they, they do approve the impact analysis, they made a note that it's not going to be necessary to have development of that road outside of M29, although they do want traffic studies done to agree with, with the weekend traffic study. So the weekend traffic study will be announced yet, so that still has to be finished. DEQ did approve our permit, Joe, we went a little bit with the sound study. Now, the concern with the sound study here is kind of some numbers, what they're concerned about is being, what kind of decibels, what kind of decibels could you do at this area and be lower than the impact on the residents or the outside area? Now, the, the study was keep it less than 70 decibels out at the, at the property lines, and so you can see where our concern was the residents, and, you know, we hit 70 here on a property that we own, and we don't hit, we don't hit other properties, and so we hit 70 at 93 decibels. So they kind of did, they did their study, and where that's, if there was a 93-decibel sound pointed out where, how that would affect the area. So we want to make sure that we stayed under first of 70 decibels at the property lines, but effectively with the zones, we stay, we stay far below that. And kind of an idea, and it is what it is, but the, but at 70 decibels, what is the ordinance is, inside of, inside of aircraft, where we think we're going to be is between a dishwasher at three feet and a conversation piece, conversational speech at three feet. Now, at 90 decibels or 93 is what they just tried to push the limits to be at the borders. They were just, our, our consultants said, okay, if we push limits here, where do we reach that 70-decibel type borderline? So it's kind of gives a, kind of gives an overview where we'd be on that.
So at 90 decibels, a subway train at 20 feet is basically what the consultants, this is their standard passout, so you get an idea of what it sounds like. So 90 decibels, subway train at 20 feet, 70 decibels, that Brian talked about is like an insider Boeing 757 aircraft during the flight. So that's 70 decibels. Uh, so that's seventy decibels. Fifty decibels, they're saying is a quiet dishwasher at three feet. That's what fifty decibels registers as. And that's what, you know, the upper Stark Drive being nine hundred and fifty feet away is going to be this level based on this study from an in and out of firms. So that's why we included this.
Briefly, if I could, I understood that they submitted a revised site plan on the seventeenth to Giffords. And I understand that they want some of the rest of your submissions by July the third in order to get to the July twenty-sixth or twenty-fourth meeting. I saw yesterday, an email from Mr. Anderson at MDOT and talking about his traffic impact assessment. And MDOT had approved it, approved it in contingent on recent weekend traffic council taking. The same day, we got through Wade Trim, a new traffic study scope from Giffords and Webster. Now, I've done a lot of work with them in the past and I respect what they're doing. But this moved the goalposts significantly. I mean, there's been meetings with MDOT, there's been meetings with everything else. Now we're talking about not only the weekend traffic council, but we're talking about contact the Army Corps of Engineers to determine the scope of boat traffic analysis, submit scope of boat traffic analysis after approval by the Army Corps of Engineers, include discussions of pedestrian bike cycles, include mitigation plans. There's a number of things on here that I don't even know that they exist. And this is after meetings with MDOT where people from the board have been attended and others. So I want to try to cooperate, but the timelines are such that if they've gotten a submission on the seventeenth, if we can get their comments back and have a chance to try to deal with those before July the third, that'll make your July meeting more effective. But if not, if we're going to come here on July the twenty-fourth rather and get the comments, now we're going to be into August, September, whatever. So I'm asking that the board allow Giffords to work with those in an effort to try to get this done so that you can have everything you need on a timely basis and address it at the July twenty-fourth meeting.
Okay, thank you for your presentation and I know you're late joining this project for sure, but I thought we made it abundantly clear at the first go-around of what this board was requesting that the applicants provide. And there was not any pushback saying we can't do this or anything else like that. It's exactly what I read in the memorandum from June nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen and I'm relying on the township employees who tell me none of the requested documents were submitted by June fifth deadline. And that's not in our control, that is in your applicant's control. So at this particular point, as much as I hate to say it, we're not trying to be difficult, but we have requested certain items after listening to the public and their concerns and our concerns. And that's just my two cents part on this.
And this topic particularly about the Army Corps of Engineers, I read the permit that they sent to us to that and then he decided to send it back. That's an Army, that's what's referred to in, I think, in the June nineteenth memo, which I've seen late to the port. But now this is different. This doesn't say the Army Corps of Engineer permit. This says determine the scope of boat traffic analysis from.
And we, and that's what we requested. We requested traffic and we requested boats. And that was something that was, especially where this is located and that was not, as far as I'm concerned, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, a problem from the applicant's point of view.
Okay.
And I'm like, okay. And I thought it was very clear. Matt seems to be somewhat of the go-to person on this particular project and he was willing and is still willing to deal directly with the applicants and get this as quickly through with the correct information that we're requesting. And again, it's this planning commission that's requesting this information. Planners are willing to help us and coordinate with your clients to get it. But as far as I can tell and I get my information from people who are in this business, none of it's been done. There's a difference from MDOT requesting their meeting and what they wanted versus what this board said, hey, we want a traffic study, traffic cars and boats, along with a few other items. I thought when we left the meeting, it was pretty darn clear what we were looking for and here we are now on June whatever. And we would love to have all the information on time and presented, but at this point, we don't even have at this point the new updated site plan. It wasn't submitted on time, what we're seeing right there, as far as I know, is the first time I've ever seen it. And I've heard, hold on, I've heard different things about it, but there's a process that has to go through. We're not trying to hold anybody up, we are trying to do what we need to do to gather the correct information and make an informed, intelligent decision for this community.
I understand.
So, um, I'll give you about two seconds and then we're going to have to move on to the other.
All right, that's okay.
Perfect.
So, but thank you for, on the updated presentation. Unless our planners have something more to say, I'm going to move on to the public comments from the audience. And if you gentlemen would like to have a seat, you can be going.
May I drop off with the email strings of when I dropped off at?
Oh, I'm going to say this for every project, not just this project, everything needs to go through the building department because that's how all our information is distributed. Emailing directly to Giffords Webster or I or anybody else is not the way it works. You have to go through the chain of.
Yes, right there.
So, and I'm not, I'm not doubting you, but I haven't seen that either. So if you want to submit it to the building department, they will do what you normally do.
We'll submit it to the building department. There were a lot of things that were submitted, of course.
And that's fine. And I'm not, I don't have any way to prove or disprove I'm just taking.
Send it to the public.
Yes, please. I appreciate that. So, thank you, gentlemen. And I move to the public.
Chair, I'm going to give the planners any input on the new site plan presentation before we move on to the public comments.
Okay, hold on, sir. Don't act, I don't know, sir. Sir, can you wait just one minute? I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
You're just thinking you didn't know.
You have no more.
We're still reviewing.
Yeah, I don't.
So have, have you seen the new?
I have, I received it, yes, I have been reviewing.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
Okay, and I apologize for that, so. Anybody in the public who wishes to come forward is, oh, can you wait one second? I'm going to let him go first, okay? I'm sorry. Could you please state your name and address?
Tony Katsroski, Lake Drive.
Yeah.
Well, I understand what they were saying, MDOT says there's no requirement of altering M29.
At this particular point, with the information they had, that appears to be the case, but MDOT has now on their own, suffering from us, requested additional information.
My question would be to you guys, why did the Dollar Store and M29 have to have passing lanes?
Studies out there then, MDOT and everybody else who does, and of course, we don't have it and I'm learning as we go and there's warrants or something that they have to adhere to. And that's why they're asking, MDOT is asking for further information because the study was Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and the subban areas Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And I'm going to go to Cindy Davish, please.
Cindy Davish, four seven seven Maple Street, and I am also an employee in the building department. I received the documents, I date stamped them and I tried to organize any communication we have with the planning commission meetings. We did receive all the items in the email on June fourth during the afternoon. I have that documented as well. However, according to our policies confirmed by the planner, we have to have hard copy submitted at the counter and date stamped and that includes a full-size site plan that's legible. When you receive a full-size site plan in the email, it usually is not legible and I did point that out to Joe. And I just wanted to clarify that for the future. We need copies submitted, hard copy by the due date. So that might be part of the misconception and I believe Matt can verify that for me. So, thank you.
So what I've stated as far as the flow of documents in.
Right, after the April meeting, we all had the same list we were working on expecting those items to be submitted. We received numerous items by email on June the fourth. We did not receive any hard copy over the counter until Monday or Tuesday, June seventeenth, June eighteenth. And that was the full-size site plan. So that's why it's still under review.
Thank you for all your hard work. I know it's a lot.
Thank you.
All right. Name and address, please.
My name is Keith Stein. My address is seven eight eight nine Stark Drive. I represent people on Stark Drive as well as other concerned citizens in the area. One of the things that I wanted to say first off is that we all appreciate the fact that this is a very complicated and complex project. And the board has done a great job in trying to get your arms around the many facets of this. And there's many facets of this that haven't even been discussed yet. I want, and I want to bring out some of those and to also discuss some of the things that were recently mentioned by the applicants. One of the things that we just saw today was that there were sound tests and sound analysis done. But unless I missed it in the presentation, there was nothing that discussed the sound of boats that will be in the area. This is, this is going to be an event destination and the applicants have posted on Facebook that their desire for this project is that it be a mini put-in bed. And just to give a visual to that, I'd like to approach the chair with, with a picture of what a mini put-in bed will look like.
Here's your picture background.
No, you can have it, I'd like to share it with the board. Because what we didn't hear today was anything about how that noise will affect the community. And that is a significant concern for the residents of the, of the community. But there's others that I think we want to discuss and I apologize if there's things that I'll be discussing that you guys have already anticipated.
I'm just going to remind you though, because I know you're speaking on a group for a group of people. He's our timekeeper, Keith. So you might give me a little way of it, that gives you like.
So you've got the adverse effect of this project and the disruption of the wetlands. You've got the negative impact on the serenity of the area. You've got negative impact on the access to pleasure boating in the area, additional police services, additional fire services, additional emergency services, disruption of the St. Clair County Metropolitan Planning Commission and Department of Parks and Recreation Blueways, which are kayak trails and greenways, bike trails. And this also conflicts with the Clay Township master plan as it relates to promoting and maintaining Blueways and Greenways, which preserve natural amenities and link environmental corridors throughout the county. Now, the other thing that we have to consider is the safety. Safety is a key concern of, of people in our community. And the safety issues that relate to this island will, will cost money for this township. One of the things that, that the board may not have looked at is what the revenue to the township will be from this project. And when you look at a assessed value of just arbitrarily picking a number of five million dollars as a assessed value, now in order to get to an assessed value of five million dollars, you're going to have to spend a lot more than five million dollars. But just as that kind of line in the sand, at a five million dollar assessed value, and I discussed this with our county assessor, the approximate revenue that this project will bring to the township is about thirty-six thousand dollars. Now, it goes without saying that if we have this project in our community, we're going to have to have more police protection, more fire protection, more emergency vehicles. I talked with the police lieutenant and I asked him what the all-in cost of an average police officer would be and it's north of a hundred thousand dollars. So if it's our county, just going to need one more police officer, we're going to have a hundred thousand dollars invested in that. That doesn't count fire, it doesn't count the other things that I've discussed. So what, what we're asking the board to look at is the fact that this community does not want to subsidize this project. And if it's going to cost, if it's going to cost money for us and take away from already depleted resources that this township has, we're totally against it. For that reason, we do not want, like I said, we do not want to subsidize this and we would request that because this impacts the whole township and not just people three hundred feet out, that, and because this is such a big project, that we need to look at what the whole township wants. And the whole township should have been put on notice or it would be helpful if the whole township was put on notice so that we could get their feelings on this. And see, maybe I'm wrong, maybe the township does want to subsidize this. I don't think so. And I think we should get, we should get that nailed down before we go forward with approving anything relative to this project.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
My name is Diane Miller, seven three one one V Lane, and I'll be speaking on behalf of several of the residents back in the Steyer Sub, as we call it. Um, I, I would like to address the required parking as, as one main issue. In their presentation with their parking chart, they indicated that they were scaling back their maximum capacities in order to meet the hundred and six parking spots. However, in an earlier page, I believe it was page five of their business plan, it stated that they were still going to have a maximum capacity of a hundred and thirty-four in the restaurant, four hundred and six on the deck and fifty in the swimming pool. So in the earlier part defining the, the restaurant and the outdoor deck, four hundred and fifty-six people, plus a hundred and thirty-four in the restaurant, almost, you know, five hundred and ninety people or so. And also, they want the twenty-five percent waiver, however, they're operating a transient marina for rental lease because they're going to have hourly and daily rental fees for the dockage and overnight stays with power and water. And as far as I interpret our ordinances, section twenty-two dot oh six, line item sixteen in the table, says that for a marina for rental or lease, there must be one parking space for every two boaters. So in my opinion, the, the applicant needs to add those parking spaces for that marina and then subtract the twenty-five percent after the required parking has been added up. There's another issue I have with the marina part. And he states in the very last line regarding the transient marina, that he proposes a flexibility of transient marina operating without restriction from the township. Now, so far, they haven't identified how many boats are going to be docked on this marina. And now they're not putting boats on Stark Drive, however, they're still putting boats on the part that all of us back in the Steyer Sub need to go past in order to get out to the bay. Right now, we can't get out because we can't, you know, we can't put our boats in the water, we can't get under the bridge. But we, we will in the future and that's our way out. In addition, that's also that route where they plan on having most of the boats docked is also two Blueway kayak trails that go from the kayak store down that canal underneath of the bridge and out to the marsh. So, um, there, there isn't a definitive number of boats that they have stated will be there. At one point, they said that there would be a hundred and fifty on two thousand linear feet. And that was impossible. That's thirteen feet per, per boat, if they were doing a hundred and fifty. Now, there is no number of boats. And when they make a statement that they want the flexibility to operate without any restrictions, that leads me to believe that they're going to start rafting boats off into the middle of the canal. So I believe that there should be a restriction. There's kayakers that go through there, there's boats that come back and forth through that canal coming out from the Steyer Sub. They can't be rafted off, you know, two and three into the canal. And I think that there needs to be a restriction on that. Also, our master plan, Rural Conservation, says the majority of the land area which abuts both Ira and Clay Township is part of the St. John Marsh and will likely not be developed. So it wasn't a part of our, our master plan to develop in this area. I have paragraph planning influences. It says with the presence of the St. John Marsh, there will likely be very little influence from a land use planning perspective from Ira Township on Clay Township. This is right on the borderline of Ira Township. This is right on the borderline of Ira Township. I believe that this will impact Ira Township, and I think that it should be coordinated and that Ira Township should have some input to what we're doing here right on the border of those two. We have another paragraph in our master plan, Marina Residential. It calls for the development of these areas with boating facilities to be located to the south of M29 or Point Trumbull as one enters the city of Algonack. So the master plan doesn't call for having this type of a marina at the border in Clay Township in the marsh. Now, the county master plan identifies sensitive environments, wetlands, floodplains, woodlands, et cetera. That these are a valuable habitat for the animals that live there. And people like to live in areas where birds chirp, and tourists like to visit places where quiet abounds. So, you know, and these sensitive environment areas go beyond their immediate physical boundaries. Animals that live in these sensitive environments require adjacent buffer zones to roam without danger from humans. This island keeps shrinking, and this is a sensitive area in a wetland area as identified by the county. And I think I've run out of time.
Is there any other member of the audience who wants to address the public hearing on items that have not already been covered?
My name is Dominic Jagdowski. I live at 7402 Dyke Road, and I live a couple hundred feet from the island. I'm a resident in Clay Township, and I ask you, Madam Chair, and the rest of the board to listen to me, a voter, a resident, and not anyone else that lives outside of the township, unlike the last meeting that came up here and talked. They will not live with the consequences of this island, unlike the residents, whether it be from an increase in traffic, an increase in crime, a destruction of wildlife, or the added noise to our community. Look around you. You are surrounded by angry residents who are extremely upset this project was even proposed in our community. I will say it simply, if this project is passed, I will personally do everything I politically can to ensure that the township board is replaced, and so will the people behind me. I will run candidates against each and every township trustee, the clerk, treasurer, and supervisor. And when we, the people, the residents, win back our township government, the first thing we will do is purge all the committees and ensure that those who chose big business instead of the people are removed and will no longer have political opportunities in our community. That means you. So do the right thing and choose the residents, not the businesses.
Anyone else in the public? Oh, this way first, sorry.
Joe Mansmay, 7237 Mobile. Just another question. When they did these noise studies, did they take into account all the boats that will be going in and out of there with straight exhaust and not muffled in that little bitty canal? It's quite loud.
Thank you. I'm going to go with her.
I'm Linda Freund, 7770 Phillips Drive. And I've heard comments on noise. And two weeks ago, I took a video of a few boats out back behind my house. I was sitting on my patio, and boating hasn't even started back there yet. Usually, we have 150, 200 boats easy, all with different channels of that. This is on my patio. One boat. So, and then you want to put a tent and a restaurant. Well, if you're going to have live music every day, which travels across the water in close, put it in a building, build a bigger building, although I don't want anything built. But the noise out there is horrendous already. And we leave on weekends because we can't even sit in our own backyard.
Thank you for your comments. Again, I would just reiterate, if anybody further has comments regarding something we haven't already touched upon, please feel free to go forward.
I do feel like we all should have a voice, even if it's the same as some...
I understand it, but we're just trying to make it fit with, you know, courtesy of everybody around here, and we are listening definitely to everybody.
But if you hear it more than once, you know it's a hot topic. I personally like the project, but I don't like the location. I mean, I thought they had great ideas. I'd love to see all that in our township. But I am concerned with wetlands. And I know at this board here, they are, it's been before you and it's coming, is the boat ramps in the parking lot in St. John's Marsh. Are you taking into consideration the traffic that's going to be with the duck hunters and the boats and ramps at the monument in St. John Marsh? So that's, to me, an additional concern. Plus, my other concern is that we're putting development in the St. John Marsh because it's wetlands. And I read in one of the documents on Clay Township that this project, they feel, is a better benefit to the community than wetlands. And that is concerning to me. But also, I'm repeating something I don't know if I have it all right, but the MDOT study is based on the fact of 106 parking spaces, 106 cars. The actual required is different. And I think when that MDOT study comes out, you guys need to take that into consideration. I'm sure that's not totally clear. But I think that was all. I'm concerned with the development coming in St. John Marsh and then this development that is not even being taken into consideration and the wetlands. Why do we not care about our wetlands? I was going in St. Clair County. In our area, we had so many wetlands years ago, and I understand development and all that. But it's so reduced. I don't have the numbers because I didn't print it out, but it's unbelievable how much we are developing our wetlands in our little area. And we don't need that much money in our township, in my opinion. Thank you.
I'm Krista Dunrowski. We have property at 7427 and 7417 Dyke Road. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but you did say something in the memo that got my attention that no one's asked about. You said that they filed for a quick claim underground, underwater deed.
Quick claim bottom land deed. I don't know anything other than what I just read to you. That was just in front of us tonight, so I really don't have any...
I just, I don't wonder what that means? Does that change the size of the island if you claim the bottom lands?
We're going to find out because it's off to the township attorney to figure out what's going on.
I just, that really got my attention. That's all.
Thank you.
My name is Greg Ashman. I live at 7240 Baby Shores Drive. One of my concerns is, I've been living in a house that overlooks Munchies Bay now for 23 years. And it's incumbent upon me to help maintain the beauty that we have in the area. And what I find is, you know, every weekend, these boaters come in and all this garbage gets thrown in there. During the week, I find myself on my jet ski, going out there picking up cans, bottles, debris, all that type of stuff. You guys have responsibility to maintain the beauty as much as I do. And if you allow this to happen, even though, I want these men to be successful, I really do. Someone made the point that, you know, it's a great idea, it's not the right location. We have a beautiful area. Someone mentioned last meeting about a destination. What a destination we have. And we and you have that same responsibility to maintain what God has put upon us. And that is giving this beauty, this beautiful sunset, this beautiful bay, what it has offered us to have. And, you know, I spend every week going out there and cleaning this place up after these guys go out there to party and stuff like that. You bring us to this neighborhood, I'm going to send you a bill for freaking cleaning that thing up, because that's what I'm going to be doing. And I'd expect you guys to be getting out there on my jet ski and helping. So that's what I got to say.
Any other public comments?
My name is Al Rossky. I live at 7277 Dyke Road. Excuse me for my voice today. As Mr. Ashman just stated, not only the garbage and the noise that we already have, and we do live with every weekend during the summer, and we've learned to live with that over the years. And I've been there for 16 years now. That's one thing. Once this is installed, if it is installed, for the people that can't get into that 106 spaces or along those walls, Munchies Bay will be twice as crowded as it is today. And I don't know if any of you have ever been out there. But in most places where they have that many boaters and that much sunshine and that much alcohol, there's always one person that thinks that everybody loves their music. And the people that live in that horseshoe will attest to that. I sit out there on the weekend, and I bought the place because of the view. From my balcony, it's fantastic. I like the look of the boats. But at about 6 o'clock, I always tell my neighbor, "Time to close the windows and go to the store because it's too loud to sit in the backyard." Please look at, I invite all of you to come to my house on the weekend. First of all, could enjoy, and the noise that we have now, which we have to live with, and we understand that. But to add more on us, I don't think that's right. Property values. I'm seriously considering selling my home for the simple fact that at some point in time, I have an investment. I don't want that to simply fade away. The other question that I have is, if this is a restaurant, the specific thing is a restaurant, and I'm not going to ask the questions of those gentlemen. But if, we're going to start out with a restaurant, what is the final thing supposed to be? Because I've been here for 30 years off and on, and I've seen 30 restaurants starting to fail. What makes anybody think that with a restaurant only? The only one I see that is successful is Catch-22. And his longevity is only going to be for a certain amount of time, too. Well, Raft. And I've seen on next door that, you know, people say, "Oh, we need a nice restaurant to, you know, to where we can go and have a nice dinner or whatever." I remember back in the days, and this was a long time ago, when I was in high school, Algonack was the place to come for a nice dinner. Henry's, Captain's Two, all those places have been decimated. People don't frequent it. And I believe that if this is only a restaurant, these gentlemen are not, they're not stupid. I give you credit for being intelligent individuals. And I, but I wonder after...
Distract them first.
Pardon me?
Distract them towards the applicant, distract your comments.
I understand that these gentlemen aren't intelligent individuals. I think they're too intelligent to say or to put a restaurant in a township where 30 have failed over the last 15 years. Thank you for your time.
You already did one, so we're only doing one time. So I see, I've seen no other hands, so at this particular point. Ryan, pardon me if I'm... Somebody in the back? Sorry.
My name is Annette Haiza, and I live on 7353 Flamingo Road. And I'm born and raised in this area, have seen many changes. And it's a shame that there's so much negativity about trying to develop something that this community could prosper by. This island is not a, is privately owned and is zone commercial. Now, all these people who bought property around that island, they should have checked that all out before they bought their homes. So they should have known that commercial property in an island eventually is going to be developed.
Please, please just be respectful, and let her say what she has to say. If you could please direct your question or your comments towards me, okay?
Okay, well, the one thing about the noise, you know, Decker's has some music, we can hear it on Flamingo, I'm sure Brown's has it in the other restaurants, and they all turn down their music at the designated time that they all know. So I don't know, they just can't have not enough negative things to say. They just can't let us have something nice in our community. There are so many things that, you know, this is not a wetland piece of land, this is a privately owned piece of land.
Please don't...
And I'm sure MDOT will work with the owners to develop the highway, what they need to keep it safe for all the people coming here. And the accusations being made about, well, if they open up this restaurant, that there's going to be more drunks on the road. Well, you might as well close down all the other restaurants in the area, too, and the graduation parties and the reunions. You know, they just look for any little thing to nix it. For God's sakes, it would be nice to have some new development in our community. And it will also bring jobs for our community that is well needed, especially for the young people. Okay, I guess that's all.
Thank you.
Good evening. I wasn't going to say a word, but I was just spurred to ask a few questions.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your name and address.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm Gloria Earler, 77770 Phillips Drive. And number one, I'd like to know if there had been any reports, I know reports were submitted late, were reports made regarding the police, the fire? Was any of that submitted?
At the very beginning of this project, but I don't know in regards to, I don't have an answer for you.
Okay. Well, one thing that, one thing that I would, I would like to reiterate, I don't know if it's been repeated, but it is my understanding that only the St. Clair Marine Division is the one who kind of supervises all the activity. People have remarked about Munchies Bay. And as people have indicated, all of you are welcome, including the lady from Flamingo. I would like Flamingo, Aqua Isle, Riverside, and anywhere else to come to Munchies Bay. I've lived in my home since 1984, and Munchies Bay has become a great place for boaters, which is fine and good. They compete with radio stations, and that goes on to 11, 12, 1 o'clock at night. With this proposed development, the only people who can supervise boat traffic is the Marine Division. Clay Township at least had enough HUTSBA to just deputize seven deputies to go out to supervise... supervise for boaters going too fast, but it doesn't help with the boaters that already are in existence in Munchies Bay. This development is going to, with one-hundred-and-six more additional boats, and if you have any musical activity, like Aqua Palooza, which I don't know if these developers were even involved with that, at least that's what I've heard, that possibly they were. Aqua Palooza down in Harrison Township was closed because there was no, I repeat, no security company that would even handle that venue. Now, that was just something that occurred over a short timeframe. That was not something that's going to go on permanently, as this project is indicating that it will be in existence twelve months a year. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any further public comments? Seeing none, we are not closing the public hearing, but I think at this point, we need to discuss when we're going to adjourn into a date certain. So, my comments in regards to the memorandum and requested information to be submitted, I do realize we have a holiday coming up, and I believe the submittal date, if I'm reading this correctly, will be July 3rd. I am not trying to make somebody come back for a not very productive meeting, but you now understand what we're looking for, and if you need to take a moment to discuss, I mean, we very easily could adjourn into the July 1st, but if it's more reasonable to get all the information and do one more, gather all the information for a single meeting, maybe August works better. But, I guess I need to find out what we're thinking.
Kathy, if I could add one point here. They're asking for the information by July 3rd, right?
Submitted through the township offices.
Through the township, like I sent it to her and hard copies and so on. The information that's gonna be additional to what we've already turned in, I don't know if there's that much that they have to review in terms of additional information other than the signed permit from the Army Corps.
Okay, I'm gonna stop you right there, because I don't have the background to understand how long it takes for an M.D.O.T. for vehicles, for the Army Corps for boats, for a study, but I bet you if I were to ask our planners, they would have some input to give me some idea of what the scope of that would be and how long a time frame are we referring to. Am I making myself clear? Well, try to make it meaningful.
There are a couple of issues. The traffic study is one, and getting that submitted in due time. It sounds like, though, from what I've heard tonight from the applicant, that based on the permits that they've either received or they're about to receive, there's some requests that there be changes to areas where boats are going to be permitted. So, it sounds like the site plan has to be modified to address that, because if you're going, if they're proposing that as an area where boats were gonna go, and now the Army Corps is saying that they don't want boats in certain areas, then it sounds like the site plan has to be modified again to reflect what is being requested of the other permitting agencies. So, I get a sense that there's a number of moving parts here that need to be addressed by the applicant when they submit. So, I think it's important to find out if there's an anticipation that all that information would be available. I think it's gonna be close to impossible to have everything by the July 3rd deadline, because you can't typically conduct the studies that need to be done, particularly the traffic study in that period of time. So, I'm concerned that we're gonna be asking all of the folks that are interested to come back out in July, and that we're still not gonna be in a position to necessarily have a complete discussion of everything that's been provided. So, it seems to me like the August meeting is, provides the applicant a reasonable amount of time to provide the information and then have it reviewed and have it before you for consideration based upon what I'm hearing tonight.
And we're still talking about also a boat study also?
That's being requested, that the Army Corps be contacted to be aware of what the applicant is proposing in terms of boat traffic and to provide input into that. So, that's up to whatever input they choose to provide, but we would like to see that the applicant's consultant project the number of boats that would be going in and out at various times and have that information submitted to the Army Corps so they're aware of that and get input from them as to the impact that they believe it will have on navigation through the general area. So, I think that's a reasonable request for information, we're asking that be provided, and whatever the input is, is what it is, and then we will also see that and be able to review it and provide you with comments as well. So, we're hoping to have that information. That was requested at the previous meeting, this was discussed, all of the boat and the traffic study and having the scope reviewed was all discussed at that previous meeting. So, this is nothing new. Everything was discussed the last time this was before you, and this information was requested the last time that this was before.
One question I have in regards to fire and police, I know we get that checklist and we've had it.
Sure.
But that site plan that they did the checklist on has now become revised four or five times.
It would be appropriate to ask all entities that typically review your plan to review the latest plan. Absolutely. That's standard, would be a standard procedure.
Mr. Scott with the applicant.
The latest plan is three. Would August provide sufficient time for you also to review?
Well, we have our deadline, which is set by your procedures.
Right.
So, as long as they submit by the deadline in advance of that meeting that's in your ordinance, we'll meet that deadline. So, as long as they meet the submittal date.
Sorry, Mr. Scott.
Question I have is, if we, if we request all of this documentation that be to you into the township by a certain date, and all of that documentation is not provided, do we have the option of canceling that public hearing and moving into another date?
Well, typically, if you're going to be postponing and adjourning to a date certain on a public hearing, you will need to bring that up at that meeting. So, I, the answer to the question is, you don't have to make a decision, but you're adjourning it and there's an expectation that there's gonna be some discussion, you can adjourn it again and postpone it again to a date certain, but there should be some action taken to either continue, postpone it, or discuss it, or take action on the plan. So, yes, there should, something should happen if you're postponing to a date certain.
And I can say that corresponding with the township attorneys, you point also what we need to do. This can be agreed. Okay, I'm sorry.
It's pretty all right. I still would prefer the opportunity to meet with everybody and see if, some of this information I just got, and so I would still prefer to try to see what we can get done by July the 3rd, and if not, then we'll go to the August meeting.
I'm not sure what you mean by "meet with." What are you referring?
I wanna have a conversation with M.D.O.T. and with the Army Corps of Engineer, given the requirements that I've just seen for things that they're looking for, and see...
And I know you came into it late, and these are things that were requested in April and call it confusion, whatever the case may be, I'm not gonna, I'm not judging it on that.
I understand.
But, um, if we say we're adjourning into whatever that, July...
July 24th. July 24th.
July 24th date. Your proposal is to do what specifically?
I would, I would like an opportunity to see what we need to get done and submit it by July the 3rd and see if we can meet that, and then proceed on the July 24th meeting. If we can't, we can't get a submittal done by July 3rd.
And you do realize July 3rd is next week, and, and I'm just pointing this out just so we're clear, I want everybody clear. We're referring to everything that's in the memorandum from June 19th, 2019, those bullet points, whether, for lack of a better term, those need to be accomplished.
I understand.
Okay, so we're very clear on both sides.
It's a progressive schedule, and I understand that, but this is an expensive project.
Sure.
And every month costs a lot of money, and so I want at least the opportunity to try to present.
I personally don't have a problem with that, and I don't mind what the rest of the board feels.
Worst-case scenario, he doesn't get everything ready, and we're into August anyhow.
Exactly.
Correct, but we will have to, if I understand correctly, we're gonna set it for a date certain, the July 24th date, we will have to open and get reopened again the public hearing and do this process and then go to the office. But, and that's fine.
It's a continued public hearing, so I assume the same rules will apply, right?
Yep. Okay.
Not gonna start over again.
Kathy, I would like to address one thing Rod said, to redo the survey of the island, and we've lowered the capacity, I just wanna make sure everybody knows, from the off-site parking lot is no longer on the plan, we've reduced the capacities. So, to redo the survey, because now the Army Corps doesn't want the boats on the North Shore, and we're not gonna park on the North Shore, I'm wondering why I have to redesign that? That's my question to Rod, but I'm addressing it to you.
No, I appreciate that, and I'm gonna ask Rod to explain, because I hadn't thought that, but what we saw tonight is the first time we saw that.
Those were some of the things I wanted to address between now and July 24th.
That's fine.
So, if someone has a plan submitted to you, and they're going to be changing the way the plan is going to operate, so if they're proposing to park cars in a certain location or park boats in a certain location, and they showed that on a plan, if they are no longer proposing to do that, you have to have an accurate plan to act upon. If you choose to move forward and improve this project, the plan that you approve should be an accurate plan, reflects exactly what is proposed, so there's no discrepancy at some point in the future as to whether or not you approve boats parking in a certain location or cars parking a location or people being in a certain location. So, if they're changing the plan that was submitted that showed an area where boats were going to be parking, and boats will no longer be parking there, then it is appropriate and expected that the plan would be amended to actually show what is truly being proposed, so that when you take action, you're taking action on a correct plan. That's my point.
Okay, sounds clear to me. How about you?
The boat, the site plan doesn't show boat, these are questions I can address.
Okay.
To Mr. Royer, and hopefully have a conversation, if the board allows him to talk to me between now and July 3rd, and hopefully I can resolve some of these questions.
I'm assuming they're willing to do so?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, we gotta absolutely go.
I appreciate it, thank you.
So, with that, go ahead, lady.
I have a problem with trying to continue the public hearing until July 24th and get the information out to the public that's here now, that geez, we have to change the continuation, but we've continued it here today because we have to make that decision today. And so, they have to show up anyhow, only to be told we have to continue until August because we didn't get the information. That bothers me with regards to the public that apparently has accused us of being recalled anyhow. You know, so I, I'd hate to make a motion to continue until July 24th, when you come Tuesday, the 2nd I believe it is, and tell us we can't meet the requirement.
I would think that on July the 5th, you could publish it on your website, that the meeting is being adjourned.
But, the meeting, we have to have to have the meeting because we're continuing for that date.
I understand.
So, they have to show up.
I appreciate it.
Let me ask you this, and I don't have an answer to it, so I'm just talking out loud, if hypothetically they don't have what they need for this July date, I don't know if it's acceptable to the people not to put on our website that, yes, we're gonna open the public hearing and, yes, we will continue it to the August whatever day due to the non-received of all information requested. I don't know the answer, if that's unacceptable or not, because I didn't think about it till now, and the lawyers not, yes, I'm questioning, besides Mr. Scott. So, I don't know, Rod, I've had, any thoughts?
Yeah, sure. Sure.
Don't go anywhere.
If the applicant submits a letter requesting that the item not be heard on July 24th, I believe, based on past experience, that you could then, at the July 24th meeting, rather than accept public comments, because there's nothing new to discuss, just go ahead and postpone it to a date certain again without taking public comment. I would ask that you confirm that with the township attorney.
I will.
But I would say, based on past experience, that if you're getting a formal request not to hear the item, that on, that could be posted on your agenda, that we received a request from the applicant to postpone this to the August meeting, and the expectation would be you would just bring it up once you get to that item and then vote to postpone it once again to August, based on the applicant's request.
May I make a motion then?
If you want to, go right ahead.
Yes. I move to continue the public hearing on special approval, mine dues of 73, 17 Dyke Road for the July 4th, 24th meeting.
Second public hearing. Further discussion, everybody understand what the motion is?
Postponing and keeping the public hearing.
Postponing and keeping the public hearing.
Continue the public hearing on the special, yes.
That's just for longer vacation. Sorry.
Longer than we were still discussing.
Go ahead. Sure.
Okay, so if the applicant does not have the proper paperwork in time, I'm just looking out for the public, I would hate to see everybody come down for nothing, like what he basically said, so we can publish and then the township folks have the option to come down if they want, but they would be notified basically on our website.
I'm gonna confirm with the attorney that that's unacceptable, that's what Rod just suggested, and which seems to be acceptable to the applicant's ability to proceed forward. And I will contact the township attorney tomorrow, and when there's a change, I'll figure out how we have to figure it out with her help.
How to withdraw my motion then.
I'm not sure that the mechanics of it, but I will do my best to get him to contact tomorrow and see what the answer is in that direction. That's the best I can give you. Any more discussion? Everyone understand the motion? All right, go ahead, everyone.
Keith Bell?
Yes.
Edward Keller?
Yes.
Why, Simon, yes.
Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Harold Dane?
Yes.
Mark Borschard?
Yes.
Tom Cosell?
Yes.
Robert Uswing?
Yes.
Kathy Schweinberg, chair.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Motion passes.
Okay, unlike the last time I did this, I was just gonna say we do have more of an agenda to complete, so if anyone wants to choose to leave now, if you could do so quietly, and then we'll proceed on with the rest of our agenda that we have to take care of. I appreciate it. Thanks, everyone, for coming. We appreciate your input. All right, may the members of the audience, or the public, if you could, please exit or have seats, so we're gonna return to our agenda, which is item number eight, planning consultants report.
Nothing else to add.
I'm gonna bring a little bit of, hopefully some good news. I just, you know, that Cindy sent out an email last week about MAP Training, Michigan Association of Planning. So... So, it is, I will be attending that tomorrow, and it is best practices for coastal resilience planning.
Good for you.
So I just wanted to let you know that I'm looking forward to attending that, with Clay Township particularly in mind, and we'll be reporting back on that next month. So I just wanted to let you know that I do have representation there, and that I'm hoping it's not all bad news.
And you'll come back as an expert.
That's the plan. So just a little bit of something that's going on, that.
You look forward to that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Nice PowerPoint, something with the color.
I got two hundred pictures.
Or usual, really like pictures. Thanks, I appreciate it. Item number nine, ZBA representative's report, which will be Keith.
We had one appeal this month, it was for 6403 Dyke Road, it was a gentleman requesting to demolish and rebuild a boathouse, at the height in excess of 17 feet to accommodate a large boat that he purchased, so that he could get it in through to the high waters. The appeal was denied, because there was no hardship or practical difficulty. That's it.
Thank you. Item number 10, board representative's report, which is Mark.
Truly want to appreciate the comments from the public today, showing how our township works. Monday night, board meeting, we approved the waterfront setbacks.
Thank you.
Item number 11, chairperson's report. I just want to say thank you to everyone, which includes planning commission members, for taking the time and energy. I know these matters are sometimes difficult, and there's a lot of material we're trying to process, and thank you very much to the planners for trying to keep us organized. And Cindy, for all the work you do to try to get us the work we need, so I do appreciate it, and for the pleasure of being here and giving their input. Number 12, this planning commission member comments. I'm not hearing any, so I'm going to go on to number 13, public comments, and everybody in the public can, you know the routine. Name, address.
You're going to have it memorized, so 7311 B Lane, Diane Miller. During the public hearing for the social club, if I understood correctly, you closed public comments, but you're leaving them open for the island?
That would be correct. We are, and it's a huge project, and that's what we're doing, so I can't say we've ever done anything else, but that's what we're doing.
I guess one of my concerns is, is that I got the impression that the reason why you were postponing was because most of the public didn't have a chance to even know what was going on with the social clubs, because the minutes weren't approved for until tonight, so a lot of people didn't even know anything about it. So, I kind of thought that that's why you were postponing it, was because a lot of people didn't know what was happening, because the minutes weren't approved until tonight.
We postponed it to.
Well, we said a public hearing.
You postponed the public hearing, but I thought I heard you say that you were closing public comments, and you wouldn't take public comments, so.
I did. We closed public comments, we have now taken into account what's been said, and we're just absorbing it all, and see where we come back.
I just don't feel that enough of the public was aware of what was happening, to be able to provide public comments for that particular hearing.
Can I say this, and I'm not trying to argue, but it was published in the Downtown Voice on Wednesday, June 12, 2019, it is on, I was going to say, on the Clay Township website. It was published on June 19, 2019. We followed what we had to, as far as the public being notified. I'm not sure what else we can do with this particular point. At this particular point, we did close it, we're going to evaluate all the information we have, and it'll be back on our agenda. I'm not even sure when it's going to be back on, but we'll get it.
The issue is, is that the bulk of the work that was done on this happened at the May 26th, May 22nd meeting, and no one had an opportunity to read those minutes on the discussion of what went on on May 22nd. It was published correctly, I agree 100%, but the public didn't have an opportunity to read those minutes from May 22nd, because they weren't approved until tonight.
Because it can't be put on until they're approved, or till they're approved, I'm sorry.
They're available in the office.
They're in draft forms in the office.
It wasn't published, it wasn't posted in any draft form, and it never has been.
Hold on one second.
Can I just clarify? When we have a posting of a public notice, or a public hearing, the documents, anyone can come into the township, and we put everything on the table to review. That would include any minutes that the discussion was held, the review from the planner.
So the minutes from prior meetings that have not been approved would be made available, even though they weren't approved?
But they're marked as unapproved.
Okay, but you do not post them on.
We won't post them in the public website.
As a draft?
Until it's approved.
I think that needs to be looked at. I think that this has been fast-tracked through, for some reason, somebody who has some type of clout is trying to get this pushed through, and I still question the fact of why we're amending the Section 10, our four district, and saying that we can have social clubs when we don't have two acres, we can't have them, and I'm sure there's other zoning districts that can't either. But anyway, and the other issue that I would like to address is, I would like to see, with this MDOT study, it sounds to me like these guys are doing 106 cars of parking, and that's not what, we don't know what the cars are going to be, because in one area, they say that they have decreased their maximum capacities, but in another area, they haven't. They haven't changed the square footage of their decks, they're still allowing 400 people, but when you go to their parking chart, it shows that they've reduced their maximum capacities, when in fact, earlier in the business plan, they still show their maximum capacities of being at 590 people, and they haven't counted the required parking for boats. So, in order for MDOT to do an accurate study on this, they need to know exactly how many cars are going to be coming on that island.
Okay. This is public comments, not related to any of the other public hearings we had, so I appreciate it, and this is stuff we've already heard, and.
Well, I heard them talking about doing the MDOT study, and it sounds to me like they can't do it, because they don't have, they don't know what their required parking is going to be. So how can they do an MDOT study when they don't know?
We will find out, I guarantee it. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other further public comments?
Callie Nader, 7203 Audubon. The planner man had mentioned that we have a number of private and social clubs already around town. I was wondering, do you guys, do you know what kind of private and social clubs we already have?
I.
Lion Club.
The Eye.
Lion. Okay. Sure.
We used to publish ads for individuals, families, and the Lions Turkish Food Book. We've had some of those same kind of ads in our association.
Not ads. Physical, private social clubs.
Yes, and we've had, I believe, a Larry Havens Social Club, or Yacht Club, or whatever it is. Then there is another one on Green Drive, past your place a little bit, Boat Club. There is one on there, so I know that we, no, 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 it's a small boat club, there's at least two that I am aware of, that we have on the island. I don't know how many you have.
I appreciate that, but to me, it seems like you guys aren't really totally aware what we have, and whatever this social club is, they said nonprofit, you could pay $500 a year, and we won't know what's going on in there, and if we aren't monitoring our social clubs, I have a concern with that one. I would like confirmation, that if I go home and go online, the public, the documents will be online for that River Road rezoning, because you said all documents, public documents for this meeting are online.
It's not a public hearing tonight, just review.
We have a public hearing.
Well, that was my question. I said the public packet that you receive for the meeting, you said everything's online, not just public hearings.
Be later to the public hearing.
Only, well, my request was, can we get copies of these documents before these meetings, not just public hearings?
Our board, excuse me, offices. You can go to township offices and get the physical, or look at the physical copies there.
Well, can we get a physical, because who has time to sit there and, you know, three hours to go?
I'll have to check into that. It has to be.
I'm sorry.
I'll have to check into that.
Because it's public documents, really, the other, we may not always have it.
I'm sorry, Rod, what were you even saying?
I was saying, yeah, they're available for public inspection.
Right.
You can request copies if you may.
There you go. Thank you. For free, or if you guys.
I don't know what.
I'd have to check into that.
It's probably. My request is to have those online, please, or here ahead, but I would prefer online. And I am concerned that the planning commission chair does not realize that these meetings are not taped and not online, unless somebody's purchasing it.
It's not up to me. I am very well aware, Mr. Zorn's been here, you would have to take that up with the township board supervisor.
Well, as a taxpayer, I would think the planning commission would know.
Well, we're very well aware they're not being, for the township at different times, but again.
I know this meeting is being recorded.
This one is.
I know that April 24th meeting was recorded.
But it's random, I'll give you that.
On the township's.
Yeah, but we can't count on it if it's random, or just at your guys' whim.
Can I say it's not at our whim, it's always been the, up to the supervisor, unless something's changed, I'm not going to notify.
So the supervisor wanted this one in, the April 24th?
You would have to ask him directly. I will not speak for the supervisor.
And also, you guys had the board comments on the zoning, ZBA comments, and that was nice, saying what's going on, or what, you know, about the boathouse you just said. I would like our planning commissioner that's on the board to give, that is videotaped, I think, Clay Township Board, please give a report like was here, that would be very informative for the community.
I'm not sure what you're saying.
Well, because we just had a Harson's Island meeting, and there was no comments, it was like, congratulations on your retirement, go Musgrads, it wasn't like there's a public hearing coming up next week on the Lipinski Island, you know, there was no details. I think it should kind of inform us what's coming up.
Chair, if I may. I can't speak for the board representative, but as a cross-representative for ZBA and planning commission, the same report that I gave tonight with regard to the ZBA hearings, I do a similar report at the ZBA meetings to appraise them, apprise them of the ongoing of the planning commission meetings, and I'm sure Mr. Borchardt does the same at the board meeting.
I was pleased to hear that, which was said that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comments? Or, wait one sec, you can be nice, go ahead, Rod.
I do want to make one comment for the record, because there were several comments made on the social clubs about adult uses, and I want to be clear, your ordinance regulates adult entertainment uses, these would not be adult entertainment uses, adult entertainment uses are only permitted in your C3 district as a special land use. These are social clubs, and if there's adult entertainment associated with them, that's your ordinance, that would not be permitted, it can only be in a C3 district, that's a commercial district, as a special land use, so I just wanted to make sure everyone was clear, that these are clubs that we think of as boating clubs, golf courses, lions clubs, elk clubs, these are the types of clubs that are being considered not adult entertainment clubs.
Thank you for the clarification. Sir.
Good afternoon, Matthew Vermeil, 7601 Broadbridge Road, Ferry Island, Michigan. You've had some recent discussions on making some amendments to your composting ordinance. Where are you at today with that?
Give me a minute, hold on a second, I'm trying to remember what we did, I know we discussed it, we had, go ahead.
There was some additional research that you directed us to utilize that area of composting, other things related to size, and now we're, it's just not put on this agenda, because it's a busy agenda, so it's up to the chair when we want to bring that back up again. It hasn't been set as a public hearing, it's just been a discussion item.
I think what we did is, we were, you submitted some language, which.
Initial discussion, and then there was some feedback, and we have to do some additional research for, and then it would be another discussion item prior to a public hearing.
I would say, check the township website, and it would be under agenda items, and I believe last time it was, I don't know, it was referred to as composting ordinance, so it would be very clear to see when it's coming back.
There's a rather immediate date, so just look for the agenda for that date, if it's on at that, we'll be discussed.
Okay. Well, I hold interest at 3490 Fruit Road, it's an industrial parcel in the industrial district, obviously. It's 18.76 acres in size, and it originally was, it was a 50-acre parcel, and it was formerly the Clay Township Sanitary Landfill, which it was adopted years and years ago, and used for Clay Township solid waste. And I recently ran into some problems when I was composting on site with the township, and the township is bringing their waste to the 32-acre site that's adjacent, that's industrial, and composting there.
Is that Hyazoras?
Yes, yes. And obviously, that site isn't as large as it was, because now it's about a 15-acre lake, so they don't really have much size, and so that would leave my parcel second in size, or actually larger in land mass, and the state laws is in regards to compliance with setbacks from bodies of water, property lines. That would leave my parcel as the only parcel that would fall into state compliance.
It's my mics.
So, I just wanted the planners to put that consideration, and also size and mass. The state amended their laws about a dozen years ago, because historically, these places would take compost, and they would pile the stuff to the moon, and not do anything with it, and it just created a very unworkable, unpleasant situation, and the state amended their laws to prevent that from occurring. And they have those laws in place during their, you know, research, I'm sure you'll see that. Yeah, and that's all I wanted to know, is where everybody was at with that, and, you know, I see the township continues to bring their compost to a site that isn't registered, isn't legal, and, you know, but they do what they do, and I guess that's politics, but it's.
Appreciate your comments.
Put you guys in a situation, so, you know, it's just, I have obligations that are long-term at my site, that have to be met, and so, and you gotta do what you gotta do sometimes, to be able, for it to do that, and so.
Well, we appreciate you showing up tonight and staying so late, and.
If anybody has any questions, I don't know, I'm sure somebody.
We may in the future.
Send me a line, I'll get a talk to you.
Thank you.
Check the website.
Yes, please check the website.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi.
I just have a quick question, as it relates to some of the general topics that we talked about today. My name's Keith Stein, I'm at 7889 Stark Drive, and I know that we talked about a lot of things relative to what the board does and can do, and you decided what the parameters would be if there was a social club, and what the limitations would be on that. Who enforces, my question would be, who enforces that? Because it's not, it's not the planning board that enforces it.
Thank you for telling us.
Thank you.
I recognize it, I'm asking.
We've been trying to say that for a year.
Thank you for recognizing that.
So, but who does? I mean.
Mark may be able to answer this one, because we have a new code enforcement individual?
We do, we do.
So is that code enforcement?
It is.
So once the permits are issued, then it's.